Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting for July 19, May 22, here at City Hall. Would the, please confirm the roll.
Mayor, all council members are present.
Thank you. I'm gonna go different because I know we have a struggle with the, with the, with the, um, clerk's voice tonight. Mr. Rosen, would you lead us in the salute? Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Ah, first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. Could I get a motion?
Move to approve consent?
Yeah. Motion, I get a second.
All seconds.
Yeah, a motion by Mr. Elwood, second by Mr. Jocelyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If there is an issue, unanimous, thank you very much for that. Next up on our item, on our agenda this evening is citizen comments. If you are a member of the public and wish to comment on an item not on tonight's agenda, this is your time. Therefore, those of you in the chambers, start there and then we'll move online. Those of you online, if you wish to comment, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine if you called in on your phone. Do we have anyone here in the audience? Thank you. You start with your name and address for the record, and you have up three minutes.
Yes, my name's Robert Butterfield. Live at 15320, 170th Place, Southeast North Bend, which is in Fire District 38. I'm here tonight, a little background. In June, I attended an EFR board meeting where I filed a citizen complaint. There was no action taken, and then in July, showed up to the meeting to find out what was going on. Again, with Stonewall, had it not been for a fire commissioner from another agency, speaking with the board chairman, as a city council member here, find out what was gonna take place. It wasn't until then that it was told that nothing would occur until a written complaint had been made. If a written complaint was necessary for action to be taken, I felt that it should have been told to me on either June or July, when I was standing at the podium, not to hear later on. So the reason I'm here this evening is last night, presented the written complaint to the Fire District 38 Board, as well as this District 38 representative for EFR. So I'm here tonight with a copy of a written complaint, hand it off to the city clerk. I think it's important for all the council members to read this complaint. Um, one of the things that did happen after I filed the complaint, I was a 40-year employee or a 40-year member of Eastside Fire and Rescue. Most of that time was spent out here in North Bend. Um, I retired in 2018, and within a month, my complaint, Eastside Fire and Rescue scrubbed. Anything that had to do with me off their, off their Facebook page. Clearly, I must have struck a nerve, somebody within the agency, by filing a complaint with the department. And so with that, hand this off to you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the audience? Seeing none. Bree, do we have anyone online?
No.
Anyone online? We will move on. Need to glance at my directions for this evening. I'm still in order here. I am Susie Mianod. Next, we're gonna move on to commission and committee reports. We'll start with economic and community development. So remember Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pardon me. We met today at 3:00, so that would've been July 19th, of course, and we had two very interesting, I found very interesting topics. The chamber, Snoqualmie Valley Chamber, Kath Lee Hoffman is her name, came and gave us a very thorough presentation and update on what the chamber is all about, what they've been doing since 2020, basically, throughout COVID. I hope the gentlemen, our fellow council members that were there with me today, Mr. Jocelyn, Mr. Elwood, enjoyed that presentation as well. We were able to bounce questions back off. It was very easy and breezy, but very thorough, like I mentioned. The second thing we spoke of was the Shoreline Grant Award for $30,000, which is actually quite exciting. We'll talk further about that in the future, I'm sure. Right now, we're just accepting the award and getting the baseline information going forward from there. So good things are happening. Thank you.
Thank you. On the agenda, finance and administration. Mr. Elwood?
Thank you, Your Honor. Looking at our agenda, and I'm saying, oh, we're almost close to the public works agenda, but not quite. We had quite a few items on July 5th. Just rattle through them really quickly. City Hall key card access system, discussed city hall furniture, we discussed the council chambers AV project, budget adjustment, finance, staff changes requests, tonight we'll be speaking to, financial software, RFP will be developed and going out, professional services agreement, Thomas Pors, we discussed that, we discussed professional services agreement, and that was quite a full agenda that day on July 5th. Our next meeting is first Tuesday of next month.
You. Colin, Public Health and Safety?
The July 12th Public Health and Safety meeting was canceled. We will next meet on August 9th.
You. Almack Transportation and Public Work?
Thank you, Your Honor. We last met on June 28th at 4:00 PM in the meeting room. We had five items of discussion, resolution authorizing segregation of ULID number six payments. We had Mr. Moore making a motion for a contract with the Peterson Brothers, North Bend Way guard rail placement, our repair project. Mr. Moore also came to us with some great news, that there was a change order, Rosen, with AMEX, the roofing for the Train Depot Rehab Project, a $14,850 credit in our favor, like winning in Monopoly. Chris Cote in motion with the contract for PSC for new electrical services for the wastewater treatment plant, these two. And Ed Stonebridge came in with a, just a motion authorizing purchase order for Corin Maine for water meter reading software and hardware, so that we can be a lot more efficient in collecting and processing the water meter data. So, Your Honor, we will next meet July 26th at 4:00 PM in the City Hall, Attorney General Room.
For that, I'll just comment on one item. You mentioned the Train Depot roof. Not only did you get a credit back, I understand the project is essentially completed this morning. I hope everybody appreciates we've got a nice new roof there to pick up. Um, Mr. Brotem?
Work study on June 28th here at City Hall. We had really just two main items on the agenda, the ARPATHONS, and we talked about fireworks. As far as the ARPATHONS, we discussed some of the costs the city incurred from COVID, and we'll be able to reimburse and allocate those funds to cover those expenses. We also talked about using some of the funds for possibly some mental health issues that I think have arisen from all of the lockdowns, some issues with our youth that hopefully we'll be able to address and assist. We had a discussion on fireworks, which I believe will be coming back in the very near future, and then we adjourned. That was all, Your Honor.
Very much. Uh, Mr. Godhealth, Eastside Fire and Rescue?
Thank you. And since Mr. Butterfield made a comment, let him know, I did get the written comment from District 38, and it's presented in, and will formally be followed up. We started with a separation, a discussion of separation. We had a, somebody put on our agenda, resident had an item placed on the agenda to discuss the matter process, EEOC complaints and the separated employees. We did have a discussion about that. We also appointed a new vice chair since our vice chair left, and that is Zach Alpman. We also had on the agenda the Agenda Bill 22-19, Contract Services for Woodinville PD. They're going to become part of our services for social services. And then there was a 2020-20, a agreement between the BC and a CBA. And then that same time, 2022-21, was an LOA agreement. We got an update on the strategic plan, and then we went into a valuation, and at the end of the, or into an executive session. And then the final thing we did was, there was a motion made to accept the proposal and negotiations with Chief Lane to become the next chief of Eastside Fire and Rescue, and it was directed to have the board chair sign the agreement based upon a form and motion that is acceptable. Looks like we'll have that.
This is the new chief?
Yes.
Very much. We'll look to Ms. Demming for commission reports.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission last met on June 23rd and watched and discussed portions of a webinar on regional housing affordability crisis, consideration of issues that will be pertinent to the pending update to our housing element that will be part of the city's 2024 Comprehensive Plan Amendment. The Planning Commission will be taking the month of July off and possibly August due to summer schedules. Our next currently scheduled meeting is on September 8th for a public hearing and discussion on updates to the transportation element of the Comprehensive Plan. Parks Commission met on June 15th and reviewed and provided feedback on a draft, on a draft park survey, which will solicit public feedback on park and trail facilities planning, inform the update of the parks element of the Comprehensive Plan. The Parks Commission also reviewed and provided feedback on initial amendments to the parks element, and discussed an outreach strategy for the parks element update. The Parks Commission will be hosting a booth at the July 21st and September 1st Farmers Market, soliciting input on future park improvements and the coming update to the parks element of the Comprehensive Plan. Their next meeting will be on August 24th, at which they will review initial feedback and corresponding draft amendments to the parks element, and prepare for a public workshop for the parks element update on September 28th. The Economic Development Commission last met July 28th. The commissioners provided input on strategic direction of the planning process with Place in Maine, the consultant assisting the city on the Economic Development Action Plan. The Commission will next meet on July 26th, where the commissioners will review feedback from the last month's community focus groups and consider strategies for boosting foot traffic in the downtown. Thank you.
Very much. Regional committees, council, reports, left, right?
King County Board of Health will be meeting this Thursday, July 21st.
You. Almack, nothing?
The suburban cities association did meet, and we briefly discussed the upcoming election items, including the several things that you will see on your voter's pamphlet, be arriving in your boxes quick soon. And then the county council also authorized a increase in the conservation ordinance to acquire more property. You'll be seeing more on that as the November election.
The other regionally. No one stepping forward. We'll move on. First item on our main agenda tonight, item number 14, AB 22-090, ordinance forming the Meadowbrook sewer ULID. This is the second reading. Mr. Regos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to, second. Motion to postpone this item. Is that to a date certain? Motion is second. I believe that goes without debate. I believe you can. I don't have the rule open, but I do believe. Stu?
Thank you. Yeah, the request here is to give our citizens some time to do their due diligence. Elwood and I met with them this past weekend. I believe that most of them received a proposal this past week. Not everyone has all received it yet, somewhere away on vacation. With that being said, I think there was lengthy discussion about questions. I will preface this by saying, Mr. Elwood and I explained to the residents that we are on board with the current ULID proposal. It is the best I think we can do with what we have, and I think it's also a very fair proposal. Mr. Elwood and I discussed that with them. The residents, I would say reluctantly agreed, understood that it was time to move forward. At that point, in our discussions, there was, there was several questions, mostly along the lines of clarifying questions, things about how, what would trigger the payment, or actually, the beginning of payments for the ULID, things like if you added a second bedroom, or an additional bedroom or bathroom with this trigger beneath it. A lot of these questions, we did not have an opportunity to answer because we didn't have the answers. I believe submitted those questions, and within the last hour, staff here has taken the time to answer those, and I greatly appreciate that. And we'll make sure to disseminate this information to residents. Mr. Elwood detailed notes, and I believe, I haven't looked at it all, but it looks like the vast majority have been answered. Um, in addition, there was an attempt, I believe, by the residents to reach out to a land use attorney, and they were told that that attorney would be available to them later this week. So I believe the request to have attorney look at this is more than fair. I think doing their due diligence is certainly right thing to do. I don't think the city would ever rush to sign a contract without us doing our due diligence, or sign something not happening. I think the only issue we're really seeing here is, honestly, it's an aggressive schedule to get this moving, and I think we were almost at the finish line, but this can't be completed until they have an opportunity to do their due diligence. Thank everyone for getting them the information. Fortunately, with this compressed schedule, does not appear to give them sufficient time to look at it. As I said myself, I'm in support of this. I do also feel the residents' request for having additional time to review it, and also their clarifying questions are reasonable requests, Your Honor.
Yes, I'd just like to add that we're trying to stick to the schedule. We're moving forward with the resources and the time that we have to meet with the citizens. It's important for us to hear what they have to say, just because they're not at the table. And it's really critical that we allow them the time to understand the answers to the clarifying questions. And I want to thank staff, who we sent the questions out as soon as we had them assembled, which was yesterday, and staff did a great job getting as many answers as they could possibly answer on the question list. There are other questions, just thumbing through this, I haven't had a chance, time to read it yet, where the citizens' questions will be better directed at the EWI, as well as King County Health Department and some other agencies. So thank you for calling that out. It'll make their due diligence a lot more streamlined. I really appreciate the quick turnaround on the question-answer that staff did. Other than that, just need to give them a little bit more time. Thank you.
So, yes. Will we take a vote? Allison?
I'm just curious. If the answer to every question posed by the residents who have raised these concerns was dispositive or against their own perceived interest, how would that change the outcome of the vote before this council? I am here to represent the interests of the city, which I define broadly, and I'm just curious if anyone chooses to take on the question of how delaying this two more weeks is in any way in the interest of the city moving this forward as it has been? I mean, I don't need to revisit the litany of reasons and effort and work and diligence that has been dedicated to moving this forward. To delay two more weeks, so again, my original question stands of, okay, so if every answer came back, yeah, no, the answer is not the answer you hoped for, then what? I would hope that the outcome of this motion to force would not be altered by that. I plan to vote against postponement. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna make sure we allow any other counsel first, then we'll come back. Almack, anything? Miller?
I did have a couple of questions I marked earlier this week, but I think, from my perspective, I plan to go forward with this ULID. That's my intention here, but I, in all fairness, I think, no, honestly, I think people need to have a little bit more time to consider what they're going forward, since it's basically the biggest decision the city has made for many, many years. But, so I'm kind of in that position there with.
Mr. Rosen, you wanted to respond?
Yeah, Mr. Jocelyn, I'll just over. I think most of the questions were clarifying questions, and I think the answers will help residents understand exactly what their obligations are and how this will impact moving forward. Most important, I also think that they have a right to do their due diligence with lawyers if they so choose. And unfortunately, with dense timeframe, they have not had that opportunity because they just recently received a document. So that's kind of where Matt wanted to respond to your questions.
Yes, I, a couple points. One is, I will admit personal, that two weeks from now, I will be an island in northern Minnesota, absent any ability to connect to any internet anywhere on the planet, and will not be present at the next meeting to adjudicate this issue. I admit a small personal stake in seeing it go forward this evening. I also think that the way that this is all put together is, we sit here as members of a representative democracy. We are elected officials, expected to, you know, act in the best interests of those we represent. While there are members here who still have questions and issues and are directly impacted by this decision, and I acknowledge that, I am also of the opinion that based on, again, the work, effort, a commitment of the city to act as a city under the Growth Management Act, and lots of reasons, decisions previously made by council before I arrived to build the sewer treatment plant that needs to be funded into the future. Absent this ULID, folks, we're kind of toast, you know? How, where does that revenue come from to continue to pay commitments already made? I mean, this is a decision that predates me, needs to be paid for. I don't know the cost of waiting two more weeks. There is one, I can tell you that. It's not a zero-sum game. It might not be much, it might be hard to measure, but it's not zero. We're dedicated to efficiency, you know, efficient use of resources and staff time. Staff has been through the wringer on this, over and over, replying to, asking for, and council has been out knocking on doors, soliciting input, and is now deferring their responsibility as representative members of a governance body, the individual specific unanswered questions, which are valid, but are not a basis upon which this body should defer doing its own due diligence and moving forward with the implementation of vision of waste, you know, sewer services to significant piece of geography within this community, as cities do. And I will be in support now, I will be in support two weeks from now, I will be in support, you know, when this comes to us again, whether I'm here or not. Again, I would encourage council not to postpone this for two weeks. To what end? I don't see how that serves the interests of the city, which we are elected to serve. Thank you.
We're calling for the vote. I'll make chair's position, the mayor's position, clear on this as well. I oppose to postponement here for multiple reasons, but the number one is that I fail to understand how postponement affects the ultimate vote, since, Sir Rosen, particularly you, have already said that you support it and therefore intend to vote for it. So there's not change that I'm aware of in the delay. The questions that the residents have, valid questions always, are mostly, or future, or future Western, or answered in the, my understanding in the, in the agreement that was offered, something like October 1st, to decide whether or not they choose to avail themselves of that, which again is irrespective of the action in front of the council. And, and so I, obviously, I feel strongly about this, and felt that in this regard, you know, my feelings should be known, and I would urge council to vote down that motion. With that, let's do this. I'll do a roll call. On the motion to postpone tonight's vote on item 14, AB 22-090, due the following council meeting on August 2nd. Mr. Almack? No. Smiller?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mr. Jocelyn?
No.
Mr. Elwood?
Aye.
Ms. Colon?
No.
Mr. Godhealth?
Aye.
Account is for three, the motion carries. This item is postponed till August 2nd. You. It's downing. Item number 15 on your agenda is AB 22-091, an ordinance amending the 2021-22 budget ordinance, 1737. Mr. Gold?
Evening, Mayor and Council. City staff presented the Finance and Administration Committee with supporting documentation, questioning changes in additions to financial finance staff, departmental staff at their July 5th, 2022 meeting. Attached ordinance updates 2022 salary schedule. This proposed change, along with a change to CED as well, which I'll get into in a moment. As part of the proposed reorganization of the Finance Department, this ordinance also includes the hiring of an accounting assistant, one, supportive losses of the payroll consultant contracted, administrative staff that have been supporting finance for quite a while. Are sufficient wages and benefits budgeted to allow for this. The city is currently under budget by more than $347,000 through June 30th, these expenditures. I'd also like to add that, I am gonna have Ms. Demming speak to this, but ED Department is also requesting addition of an office manager/department technician, position for succession planning. I'll get back.
This would allow us for hiring and training a new employee by the current employee in order to ensure there's no change in service levels for possible future retirement equation.
So, I know, I sent out a memo, we went over this memo with the Finance Committee, and there's a lot of information there, and it almost looks like a L-game because so many moving parts. I kind of wanted to go down real quickly how this, what this looks like, so you understand if there's any obvious questions you can ask those, too. So we're replacing the payroll consultant, that's about $43,000 annually, place accounting assistant, two, who moved over to be deputy city clerk, add back accounting assistant, one, remote utilities coordinator to staff accountant, remote business license and tax coordinator to staff accountant, hire a new utilities coordinator. And I always look at, when we make moves like this, changes like that thing, is it sustainable? Not just this year. Not just this year, but the next year or more? And because we're under budget, it is sustainable, and the impacts budget are minimal, and we were only actually adding when you netted out. So, that's the accounting assistant, one, which is one of the lowest paid. Finally, to allow the support that the current staff desperately needs, for time off, vacation, and for training, and definitely for a morale boost, so.
Comment unless there's a clarifying question, only clarifying.
So the staff accountant, one, is to replace the payroll that we'll be, we're currently outsourcing, is that correct?
Yes, but not directly, because we're actually going to bring payroll in-house to one of the staff accountants, so they're going to take it on. But what will happen is, all the work that's being dropped off from staff accountants will go to the accounting assistant, one, because payroll is more of a higher level workload, and so we want somebody with experience here to do that, and so the accounting assistant will be supporting each department, primarily at the beginning utility.
So to clarify, this will be, you won't be asking for another staff accountant to replace, it would be basically to take on additional role of the fact, bringing in board the payroll.
Clarifying. Sir Rosen?
What is the total net new member of employees? I know we're having some, it's just one.
They're clarifying. We'll move to public comment. If you are wishing to speak on this item on the agenda, please indicate in the chat box, or by star nine if you're online, step to the podium if you're here in the room, and you'll have up three minutes to speak, starting with your name and address for the record. One here in the audience? None? Anyone online?
No.
Right, thank you very much, suspected as much. Let's see, this would have come through Finance, Mr. Elwood?
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to approve AB 22-091, an ordinance amending the 2021 to 2022 salary schedule as a first and final reading.
Motion, a second by Mr. Godhealth. Mr. Elwood, anything to add?
Thank you, yes, we've known for some time that the Finance Department is in need of some more support, so I appreciate all the due diligence that went into bringing this to the committee's attention, and then here to council. Supergood has done a fine job of articulating the finance part of it, so it's great that you're our finance director, that goes part in hand. So I do encourage it, do pass, thank you.
Mr. Godhealth, anything to add?
Nothing to add, Your Honor.
You, council, who else? Being none, the motion, I'm sorry.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor, I plan on voting for this, I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, missed you. With that, the motion before you is to approve AB 22-091, an ordinance amending the 2021-2022 salary schedule as a first and final reading. In favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, it is unanimous, thank you very much for that. This time, we'll be turning to Mayor, Council, Administrator Concerns and Initiatives. I'm going to turn this a little bit on its head this evening, in that I'm going to go first, Chief, and thank goodness, I'm seeing what I'm seeing, because that was part of my presentation. Chief, your timing could not be better. At this time, as part of my notes for this evening, I wanted to share with you that we do have a new police captain that has been named and sworn in, and will of course be working very closely with North Bend, and I've asked Chief Phipps to bring the captain here this evening and introduce him, so Chief, please.
Two, we both, two city council meetings to go to tonight, so.
I was giving you full credit for impeccable.
I should have took it, I know, but I didn't, either why I'm actually late, so. Thank you for the opportunity just to introduce new captain, finally. As you know, Nick Almquist left to become chief in another community in January, and so we've been looking for somebody to kind of fill his shoes, as difficult as that is, and I think we know that we have a good selection, and somebody that may really help us move forward. And there's, I'll go through real briefly about why I selected him in the process, but it really comes down to not just his skills as an investigator, he's got 21 years in law enforcement, 17 years as an investigator, in fact, he was the commander of the Major Crimes Task Force, which is the investigative branch of the small coalition of police agencies, which is 12 law enforcement agencies. He really headed that up, and so he was in charge of 17 detectives. So if there's a, North Bend, if we have a homicide in this community, Brian was the guy that we would call to come out and investigate that crime. He did that for, he was responsible for all of those agencies that's included in that small agencies coalition. So he's got the skills and the training and experience for this position. He's been a sergeant, it's kind of a big leap to go up to captain, well, because there's a lot more of administrative duties, but I'll tell you, in the first week that I've had the opportunity to work with him, he's already jumped on a lot of those administrative duties. I'll tell you, because I've been for seven months, been doing two jobs, you don't know how happy I am to have him around. And I think, I don't know if my wife's happy or not, but she hasn't seen me at all. But anyway, you know, the bottom line is, all that's good and great, and expected, I guess, from this position, really, it was a servant's heart that really did it. You know, when we selected an officer, or Snoqualmie North Bend Police Department, it's really something more than just police officer that goes out there and makes an arrest, or pops a car and gives them a ticket, it's really much more than that. It's somebody that's really able to see beyond that typical police stuff, do something more, and there's an article that I read when I was doing my own little background research on him, there was an article in the local newspaper of where he was employed at, and it basically talked about an incident in which a young lady was probably going a little bit too fast on her way to work, and Brian stopped this vehicle, this driver, and made contact with her, and ultimately, the car broke down during this stop, and yes, he diverted his attention from maybe the enforcement aspect of that. Ultimately, the vehicle was secured for the night, ultimately, they found a way to get that vehicle repaired, he transported her back and forth from the house, and so he went above and beyond what most people would think an officer would do, but I think that's what that servant heart is, is that we do more than what is expected, make sure that we're serving our community. And that's what I wanted here, and that's what Brian brings, and so appreciate the fact that we had the opportunity to pick him up, and I feel blessed about, so give him a couple of minutes, if you'd like.
Mayor and council for, given us an opportunity to come over and introduce myself, I am a resident here in the area, I've been for the last five years. My wife is a long time resident of North Bend, 40 years, and on top of that, her parents have been here for almost 48 years, so, kids go to school here, I shop here, I was joking with the guys today, that I'm hearing these calls come out in North Bend, and I have no idea where those streets are. I drive them all the time, but I just don't know the names, so that's one of the learning curve things for me, is to figure out 100 blocks and streets for where I am. When this opportunity came, you know, for me to, in an application for this, it was a tough decision for me to leave my agency that I've been with for over 14 years, but the more I said no, the more the phone calls from the Snoqualmie officers were coming to me, and kind of talked me into taking it. I put my application in, not in a million years that I would get it. It's truly an honor to be the captain of Snoqualmie North Bend, and me personally, to actually serve in the community where I live, and where my family lives, and my family, it means more than I can let you guys know. I look forward to getting to know here in North Bend, and working close with the guys in the future. If you guys ever have any, any need for my assistance, please don't hesitate, know how to find me.
Captain Lynch, I'd like council to know that I did have an opportunity to be with the captain, one, during his application process, and had a wonderful conversation, and very pleased that he became the candidate, and this all worked out for us, excited to have him here. Maybe, maybe this, maybe not even the second most happy person behind the chief, but very pleased that we've gotten this position filled, it's been a hard row for us all here, and so we're very pleased to have him. Before you, before you go away, Captain, I want to subject you to any questions that the council may have, or comments that they'd like to share. Mr. Lowdenback?
Captain, thank you very much for agreeing to become part of the team, you've got a great, great bunch of people to work with, and the chief is certainly a great guy to work with, I think you're going to make a great team, and I think it only benefits the citizens of North Bend that you live here, and your family has ties here, and we all appreciate that your willingness to serve, so thank you for joining, and we look forward to working with you.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you so much for being a part of our community on a different level, a deep, convincingly level, that we need someone fantastic like you to join up, already fantastic individuals are watching our back and saving us each and every day, and while putting themselves at risk, so really want you to know how much I appreciate you and everyone there. Thank you so much for being a part.
Sir Rosen?
Mrs. Miller's comments, thank you so much for stepping up, appreciate everything you folks do over there, incredibly difficult these days, and see someone still have a passion for it is, so thank you so much for everything.
Mr. Jocelyn? Elwood?
Just echo everybody's fine sentiments, and say thank you very much for joining our community, and the fact that you do have roots here is a special value add to us, and I appreciate that you applied, and you got the role, and look forward to working with you on the road, so thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
I echo everyone's sentiment, and thank you for coming aboard, I think all of North Bend is appreciative, I know Chief Carey is appreciative, and we've definitely been needing you for a while, so thank you.
Just make it unanimous, you know, appreciate you stepping up, do a tough job, and you've been missing a captain in this, this area, so really glad to have you on board, and looking forward to work.
Very much, and it's going to be a little bit before I start running on some of these projects that I want to do, but I'm, I'm looking forward to the challenge, and the city on project learning, so thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Jocelyn's coming back around.
I'm sorry, I do sincerely echo all the sentiment expressed here. I do have a concern about the state of the nation, and policing in our nation, and I am firmly of the belief that de-escalation training should be an important part of any officer's training, and I simply will state that for the record. Do appreciate your joining us and coming on board, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I think, again, just in summary, I think it's always very special when we are able to have a member of the community be a part of our staff, of the community, that really adds a lot. Appreciate you being here, appreciate you coming in, this all happened. So I just have a little more comments here, I'm actually even going to, I'm going to go, I'm going to go to one here, my more general comment, this past weekend's block party was a huge success, all the reports back from council members, from members of the community, from staff, all reported that. I want to thank city staff members, purely Bree Kevren, for all the organizing and the this event, tremendous work while doing double duty, as the communications manager as well, a lot of extra hours there, and also for all the public work staff and city hall staff that helped with this event. A lot of folks were involved, I think, probably more than, than we've had prior. I'm also very pleased that I heard that a lot of city staff were able to take advantage of being a part of the event, and that's gratifying as well, when you're able to be a part of your community, so that was great. Special thank you to all the volunteers who helped out, and special call out to the Downtown Foundation, who pitched in with volunteers to help, so that was a fantastic. Final item here is, is a switch, there's, there's changes that occur in, in cities, and in staffing and all, and we've just had the arrival of new captain, the comments and the welcome that we've done there. Council, you're all, all aware, and of course, staff is at this point, for the general public, it's with sadness, and, and great hurrah, we're announcing formally tonight, our deputy city administrator, administrative services director, Don Moscow, is stepping down, her last day is actually this Thursday. She's been with us eight and a half years, so well before my tenure as mayor, but I knew her a little bit beforehand, it's incredible, working with her, always, a lot of fun in conversation, just a wonderful person, one of those who you wish you actually got to spend more time with, out of work, just enjoying being friends than, than the work that we did together, but she gave the city so much over these years, is going to be terribly missed, and we're, we're working the, how we are going to fill those shoes, and she had multiple pairs on most of the time she was here, and so with that, we have a little something. I did that mostly without, yeah. I'm sure she might have a few things to say, but I'm going to look to council, because I know that council members, and particularly those who have been able to work with her all these years, certainly have some comments. So, Mr. Lowdenback, would you like to start?
Certainly, Don Moscow is probably one of the most accomplished, effective leaders that the city has had in, in many, many years. No findings ever under her watch, in the state, in our audits. Don is a great leader, and a terrific person, we're going to miss her, and one of the things I remember most about Don is that she was always willing to have her door open, and sit down and talk with you, and explain things to you if you didn't understand, and as a committee chair, anytime any of the other directors came with a financial wish list for a new project, I always relish the fact that I could always say, did you ask Don first, before you come to the committee? Because she, she was somebody who watched cities' back every turn, she made. She made, she listened and she also made the tough decisions. And I think we are going to be lesser community and city government without her. But I also think that her moving on and taking some time for herself and her family is very, very important. And you're going to be sorely missed. Thank you, Don.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was very moving. Don, I've known you even before I was on council. So when I much became a photographer for the city, that was the first time I actually met you when you sat before me. And you were instantly personable, you're dynamic, lovely. And through the years, you've showcased your efficiency, your, your dedication. I can go on forever. And the ability to lead and with a sense of calm. Not everybody can pull off. Anyway, you've impressed me from the get-go. Even my corgi loves you. Thank you so much. And not into the future, I'll be thinking of you. And I count you as a friend. Blessed.
Sir Rosen, I don't think you had anything. Should I move on? Yeah.
I, Don, I can't, I can't imagine the city without you. You've been such a big part of everything that's gone on here for the last eight plus years. You stepped in admirably and filled some really big shoes when we needed you most. You never missed a beat. As Ross said, endings, we always knew that you were going to take care of things for us. You were, you were a friend to all of us when we needed it. You also never sugarcoated things. That is so important. You told us the truth. Sometimes we didn't want to hear it and you still insisted on it. And I thank you for that. I think we're all better council members because of that. I appreciate all the years of honest advice. And I've learned so much about the finance department because of you. Some strange reason I like talking numbers and I found someone who seems to enjoy it as well. So I'm, I'm going to miss that. It's, thank you for everything you've done for our city. Services you've done, you've done us right. Lasted the Earl, all girls team basically, except Mr. Regos who got to be a part of it. Blondie and you and Jenna. It was, it's changing the guard. We miss all of you. So thank you for everything, Don. Thank you for your friendship. I will, and I know we'll keep.
Mr. Jocelyn?
Huge missed opportunity for me, clearly given my short amount of time that we have overlapped. I will, as a resident, thank you for your due diligence and paying attention and management of the city. As a council, we are, you know, number one on the list. You've got safety. You also have fiduciary responsibility and being mindful about expenditure of taxpayer dollars. And it was clear from day one that the, this city, that has not been an issue. And, and you are the primary person responsible for that. That is very clear to me. For that, I, we all are in your debt and I thank you for your service and I wish you well going forward.
All knowledge rolls, roads led to Don. I mean, Mr. Loudenback said it perfectly. Any question when I came on as a new council member, oh, did you talk to Don? Did you talk to Don? I mean, just inevitably, if it was public work, did you talk to Don? I don't know why. Sorry, Mark, I had to give you a little grief there. No, you were a fantastic educator. I mean, I learned a lot underneath your care and nurturing advice. And it was advice that in my opinion, I, I welcomed because I, I felt it was objective. I had a lot of newbie questions and then grew to have more complicated questions. And every time I felt that I could come to you, I didn't have to feel like an idiot. And we would walk through it like a caring person would do. A caring person is exactly who you are. You've had an impeccable career here. It's outstanding what you've been able to achieve. It's outstanding what the city of North Bend now stands for with its fiduciary responsibilities. And all of that is, is due to you. And so I want to thank you for everything that you've done for me personally, as a growing council person, but also for our community. It has gone totally noticed and absolutely you will be missed. But definitely wish you all the best in your next journey. Thank you, Don. We love you.
Hold on.
Don, I've probably known you the least, but I'd like you to know I think of you as a role model. I respect you immensely. I appreciate your open door and finance is not my strong suit. So you educating me and walking me through it in a calm manner, even right before a meeting. I appreciate that immensely. So I wish you well and thank you.
Don, you are a role model. Recall conversations you had with my daughter when I was in council. She worked for the city for a little while. She's much better for that. It's interesting, if you take a look at the last eight years, what we've gone through from an economy to you. And to have somebody keep this city in a position where we never had to step into reserves is just amazing. You are going to be lost. We're going to be lost. And that's just an amazing feat. We've all talked about all the awards, but not about the fact of steering this, this city through some of the toughest financial positions we've been in. I mean, you've always been there and you've always been straight. You've come out to the council over many years where you came and said, you guys, there's going to be no decision cards. And you had to take a lot of grunt for that. There were a lot of times as finance chair, you had to tell us, no, this isn't going to happen. And you did it with grace. It always was truthful despite other people saying something different. And you will be missed. And it's going to be a great loss for you, us. I mean, hopefully it looks good for you and, and get some rest. This is somebody who would be, I'd get emails at 11, 12 o'clock at night. This is somebody who worked tirelessly for this community. I don't think any of us can say enough about how much she's worked for this community. Can only take a look at it in the amount of work, the amount that we've gone through and look at our bond rating. Since she's been aboard, our bond rating has just gone up and up. And it's my hope we continue to make sure that we have the best bond rating for a city of this size. Sorry to see you go. You're a friend. You are a mentor and somebody that has meant quite a bit to this community.
It would be remiss if I didn't look at a few staff members and just to keep this going, keep Don from being able to talk or leave. Mark?
So I wrote my comments because I'm in the awkward position of potentially getting elbowed or slapped. So here we go. For more than eight years, I have appreciated our professional relationship, enjoyed our friendship. It's clear to me that you added tremendous value to city of North Bend during your nine years here. North Bend today wouldn't be the same without you. When I arrived, wanted to be a big spender for community infrastructure. In fact, council member Rosen was very interested in many sidewalk and parks projects. Once I was here, you proved to be a tenacious negotiator over the years. Your strings were very tight. That said, we were able to find a comfortable middle ground. In fact, you financed important park projects like Ferguson Park Ballfields, many water main replacements, water main replacement projects throughout the city's water service area. Too many transportation capital projects to count, miles and miles of new sidewalks. Desperately needed new city hall. Desperately needed new wastewater treatment. On my count, you have spent close to $100 billion on all this great infrastructure to benefit the city. But it turns out that the community was actually the big winner during this period. You were one of the most important pieces of the puzzle in all of this. In conclusion, I'm saying goodbye and wishing you good luck in your next chapter. I miss you.
I'm going to look far into the tables. I'm not going to dare speak.
You know, Don, I've, I've been here only two years. So, and since I came during COVID, I haven't really gotten to know you because there haven't been as many out of office opportunities to, to know you on a personal level. But it's been a great honor to work with you professionally. Good luck. Congratulations.
Go ahead.
I'm Don. You are the queen of the city of North Bend and you're one of the first faces I saw when I began working for the city almost five years ago. I've learned a lot from you and I'm just really grateful that I got to know you both as a human mentor and queen of the city of North Bend.
Always hesitate to call on legal counsel, but did you have anything you wanted to say?
Fourteen single spaced pages I'd like. My time with Don actually predates her time here. We worked together and she ruled the city of DuPont with iron fist before she came here. And I will say over the thirty-six years I've been in this business and twenty or so working with Don, I've worked with many hundreds of African people in dozens of cities. And Don is as good as any and better than most. Real, and we're going to miss you.
Dave?
Don is the only person I know that in one breath, you could say she spent a hundred million dollars and the next breath she held tight purse string. But she managed to do it and do it well. And she wore so many hats, I thought she ought to have a Paul Revere hat because she had three different departments she was running at one time. And she did a great job with that. She ran technology. I think her, some of her greatest strengths were in risk management and helping us through some of those issues. And also a very good understanding of a lot of the personnel issues that could get real dicey for all of us. She would keep us in a real safe place. She has a great reputation with the RMSA people. She's been very, very active in the SCA city managers group. She's highly respected throughout in county. I know she's going to have a great future and I've enjoyed very much working. Good luck.
Considering all of those great, great comments coming forward and, and one that I guess I, I should add it, you know, to think about how well we all think of her, for me in particular, when I think of the number, the, the, the number of times she just said, no, Mr. Mayor. Still feel that way. I thought I should add that. Don, would you like to say anything?
I think you, you all know I don't like speaking in public very much, but thank you all for the kind words. Eight and a half, almost nine years of work and your friendship and not getting mad at me every time I said no or said no decision cards. Mark cleared it up that I, yes, obviously a lot, mainly for some major projects that benefited the community and I'm. Greatly.
Keep it up until she blocks it.
Council, thank you for indulging me and jumping ahead of you there. I think that makes it rather obvious why. With that, I'll, I'll turn back and look, look again back to council for any other concerns, initiatives and such. Mr. Gothel?
One of the things you did mention is the block party. And I want to say how wonderful that block party was. I got to sit there and watch a bunch of great performances and, and all the residents come up to me and say how nice it was to be back. And it was amazing. Many people were at that event. Only thing that, you know, I only complaint I ever had was the fact that the beer garden line for the beer line was too long. And I think that was the only complaint that I got that whole night. I was there until closing down and somebody set off fireworks. I'm not sure that was supposed to be legal. But it was kind of interesting as I was walking home seeing fireworks go off. It was a wonderful event and Bree, wonderful job. I spoke to a couple of vendors. I know you spoke, one that, that I've known for years and she said, had nothing to say about positive about your work. I just wanted to make that.
I have three things. The North Bend Block Party was amazing. It gets better and better every year. I was amazed by the kids area. I didn't know they had pudding chickens, but that was pretty cool. The other thing I wanted to say is careful right now. It's beautiful. It's sunny. It's warm. But the rivers and lakes are very cold and very high. So they're dangerous. Watch out for that. And then the third thing I want to say is primary election is coming on August 2nd. It's not too late. You can register to vote online or by email by July 25th.
Mr. Owen?
Well done, Bree. I, I had the same experience that Mr. Gothel had and it was positive, positive rave reviews. Even the, I came back and checked in a couple of different times and the music lineup that you had coordinated was fantastic. Kept head turning back going, I think I need this band's album. Do they have an album? Does anybody have an album? But point being is it was a fantastic event. The coordination of it was great. People, even in line, people didn't even know me. They're talking about how fun it was. And then there was even some other comments that were going back. I want to express them back to you, Mark, about the parking. I think it's the first time, first event that I've ever heard positive, outwardly positive commentary about our parking. So I just wanted to make sure to pass that on. But it was a, it was a brilliant event. So thank you for what you guys did and pulled off. That was fantastic.
Mr. Jocelyn?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Loudenback has left the building. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bree, my, my sentiments to you are very strong, as you know. I am actually smiling. Can't tell maybe, you know, maybe you can hear my voice. But I really appreciate you and loved how you worked the crowd and you worked everything to, to, that, that party was amazing. And on a personal note, I offered my, my services at MC, which is, don't worry, I will be leaving my day job. I'm not going to be MC Miller or anything like that. But I did have a fun time and I probably embarrassed the heck out of myself, but you know, I kind of do that sometimes. But I had, from my perspective, I had a lot of fun, which is something I'm always going to reach stars for. But being able to give merch, last minute, I brought that idea to you. You, you fulfilled it. And I'm giving merchandise from the city to kids and people who are answering or not answering questions correctly. It was super fun and the bands were great. So, you know, add to that, I was up photographing on the roof, a mic in my hand. It was silly and it was great. And I loved how everybody seemed to be having a great time. So let's do that again. Bye-bye.
Mr. Loudenback reappeared in his chair.
Yes, I did. And everybody has said, but I, I will echo here that it was a great effort. It was a team effort. There were a lot of people involved. There were current city employees, tons of volunteers who did a fantastic job. Former city employees who helped make everything run smoothly, Larry Shaw amongst others. And an amazing turnout in the beer garden from almost everybody on staff and council. I, I had to leave, so we didn't have a quorum. It was a great, it was a great event and I look forward to many more going forward. Thank you to everybody. Thanks to the downtown association. Thanks to everybody who, who put the time in to make it such a wonderful event. And thank you, North Bend, for showing up and making it what it was.
Mr. Rosen?
We thank you. I wasn't here, but I've heard nothing, sitting here listening to all this. This is, you did a great job. And as Ross said, it was a team effort. So thank you to everyone else that made that happen. I heard it was fantastic. You did good. I heard as an MC, you were on your rooftop perch where everyone expects to see you. So you did all right. But thank you for making that happen. That's, I think it's such a great community event. I think it's our favorite. This community just loves that. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, anything for the administration?
Well, it was probably my fault that you had the long lines at the beer garden because I couldn't operate the darn phone. But anyway, I finally got one that worked and I don't know, three hours, I must have sold 500 tickets. They just kept coming and coming. It was a great event and I really enjoyed it. We did have an awful lot of those. I, I think I do a shout out to the public quirks guys too, because they were moving around the whole time, cleaning it up. And they were there, you know, whenever they were needed. It really came off well. It gets better every year. And Bree's so happy because she doesn't have to do it next year because we're going to, we're going to have the downtown foundation do it. No, I'm very happy about the direction of the city and, and many, many areas that we're working. areas that we're working in. And I think during this next year, we're going to see an awful lot of accomplishment here, whether it's the economic development plan, the cultural resources plan, the update of our comp plan, all of the other things we're working on, our new financial system. So got everybody kind of, you know, pedal to the metal here. We're going to get a lot done this year. So thank you all for your support, the committees and as a council.
Thank you. Despite the fact that the clock in the back of the room still reads 2, which makes it a miracle that the meeting took place in exactly zero time. My watch says it is 8:10 and at this time, we're going to go into executive session. Discussion, potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42-30.110.1I and performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW 42.3.110.1G. You do expect to be 60 minutes. Will be no action. So with that, ring will stop at this time. We will move into the executive session.